Nobody's coming, it's nice out, so.
Okay, we're gonna call the finance meeting to order, I'm gonna say at 6 o'clock, cause Jeff's watches faster than mine. And I'm filling in for Mr. Wolfinger again, so. Short agenda. First. Temporary Resolution 3724. Resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and the bond retirement fund. That is coming through finance, so that'll be me this evening. So, the note, minor budget adjustment totaling $25029, so.
Yeah, this is, um, interest that we received or the principal payment, I guess, we said we received from the bank of an escrow for the fire medic, I believe I put in there, and the bank said there was like eighty-five dollars or something like that left, so we have to pay it, put it in the bond retirement, and then I gotta appropriate it to go against their, for their principal payment of their next debt payment this June.
And then the other part, it was the medic, was there something else?
Medic unit and, um, I believe we got another.
What was that, for, yeah, I'm trying to think. Sorry. If anyone wanna chime in, you can't. It was medic and something else.
Streetsweeper.
Streetsweeper?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
That was interest earned on the streetsweeper escrow that, um, I missed that one when I'd set the budget in, uh, this year for 2024, and now while I'm doing, I found that while I was looking at the eighty-five, so we need to appropriate that, that's cash we have in hand as well, to go towards that debt payment.
Okay. Um, so we're gonna ask for suspensions, anyone have any questions? Mr. Aylers, give me my second. Okay. Uh, temporary resolution 3824. Resolution to support authorizing the city of Lancaster apply for grant funding from the United States Department of Transportation and declare an emergency coming through economic development, Ms. Hoopt.
Yeah, there was some questions about, um, if it was urban or rural, so I'd like to, oh, she's already up there.
Yeah, so this is for the raise grant, and we, uh, are hoping to apply for the Eastside Industrial Connector, uh, to do a feasibility study, the next phase in that project. And, um, I see the note here about the rural or urban, when it's in a rural area, there is no match. And, yes, it's true that for other, um, funding sources like for HUD with the, uh, area median income, Lancaster is lumped in with Metropolitan Columbus, but for this funding opportunity, they have a specific map, I've, I've gone to it, and Lancaster is firmly in the rural area. So, I have no doubts that our application will be reviewed as rural, and we would not be, um, we would not be required to provide a match. I will say, I don't know that I said this before, it's a reimbursement grant.
Okay.
So, the funds would have to be spent and then get reimbursed, so I just wanna make sure that that gets in there.
So, if you happen to get eight hundred thousand dollar grant, where would we get those, where will we spend those funds from before we get reimbursed, would be the bigger question?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, do you have thoughts, or that'd be a finance committee decision?
I'm gonna say I wasn't fully aware that was a reimbursement grant for eight hundred thousand dollars, but, um, it, it, should we receive the grant, we would have to make a decision on, you know, whether, uh, we have money that, available for the grant from either Department of Transportation or from other grants that might be available, or other funds that might be available, but I assume we wouldn't spend the eight hundred thousand dollars all at once, it would be over a period of time.
Right, so as you spend it, then you would be reimbursed, so it would not be spend the whole amount and then get reimbursed, right?
So, do you have an idea, like, I mean, it's, no, it's federal, right?
Right.
So, timeline, you do a bunch of the federal stuff, so what's your reimbursement timeline? So, if we spent two hundred grand and you submit for reimbursement, how long does that take?
I have not, um, worked with this particular program before, so I don't know, um, but our other, our other grant programs, we have a portal, it's already set up, it's, it's set up with a direct deposit, so once the application, or once the draw is approved, it's relatively not that long, right?
I, we, we've, we've managed where some of the grants that, that she deals with are very timely on getting those requests, and some have a little bit more difficulty and more hoops to jump through, um, so, kind of, we're hoping that it would be in a timely fashion, but we've not dealt with, um, this department before, to see how timely they are.
Do, does this require hiring people?
No.
Okay.
This would hire a consultant to do the feasibility study, and they would be supervised by the engineer.
Okay, but I mean, not hiring somebody else to go in with the seven people you have?
No, 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 this would not even come to community development.
Okay.
This would be a grant for the, yeah, this would be a grant for the engineer's office.
So, um, just open.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm new to the council, I don't have a clue what the Eastside Industrial Connector is, that we're doing a feasibility study on, does anybody else, anybody else in the, yeah?
Seen it, no, I've seen it.
You've seen it, okay.
Yeah, I, I was raising my hand that I knew what it was.
Oh, yeah, I think it'd be nice if we had a, a drawing or something that we could at least know what we're talking about, you know, what we're discussing.
So, just real quick, before you came on council about, uh, a month and a half ago, Stephanie Bosco, the Economic Development Director, actually had a meeting in the Economic Development Room. I was there, Linda was there, Stephanie was there, Larry was there, um, Cory was there, there, there were a few people from council there, so I apologize, you just didn't get that opportunity. But if you would like to, you know, set up a meeting at some point to have that conversation, we can provide you with the same information that we provided them that night.
Anybody that's voting on this ought to have the information, I would think, just.
Everybody was welcome to come, like I said, some council people did, some didn't, because I'm sure others have heard about it in other venues, whether that's at their committee meetings, or, you know, other city council meetings.
Is, is there a map or a drawing of some sort that could be circulated?
Yes, sir. Yep, there's a drone view, there's a, a map, there's all of that, and we'd be happy to provide it, it's just, you know, can't do it right here, right now.
Well, I think, I think anybody that votes on it ought to have that same information, whether they were at the meeting or not, that there has to be minutes from the meeting.
Yeah, the east.
This, eight hundred thousand is a lot of money, pay for a study and for preliminary design. I, I'd love to have eight hundred thousand dollars for a preliminary design on a project, so I'd like to see the scope of the project before we vote on it, is all I'm saying.
Okay, there weren't minutes from that meeting because it was just an educational meeting, where there were no deliberations or formal decisions being made, and you're allowed to meet and, and have a meeting where we do that without, without any.
Not questioning that at all.
Public, okay.
All I'm saying is, we're voting on something, and we have very little information here for those of us who weren't in that meeting, and it'd be nice to have that information.
Okay, like I said, we'll provide it after today's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
If I would, I, I would just say, uh, Mr. Luckenberg, there's a lot of information that you're gonna be first exposed to tonight, I can't imagine anybody in this room other than you maybe not being familiar with this, so.
Okay.
You're, you're brand new, and you're gonna have to gather information as you move along.
Right.
So, there, there's the full flyover of this route, there was a bus tour of this route, there was a meeting on this route, it's been going on for several, actually several years, so.
I think when we first started talking, so we talk about in Public Works too, interestingly enough, it's been a conversation off and on for like thirty years on.
When, when I was on council in eighty-four, this study was done, and, and it's almost the same route, so it's, it's forty years, but it's.
Forty. I was trying to.
Yeah.
Lower your.
I know.
Your, yeah.
Well, is this, is this the continuation of the bypass on the southeast side of Lancaster, is that what we're talking about?
If, I, I would, me personally, I would call it a south side bypass, if you, yeah.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, I mean, I've heard that forty years ago.
Yeah.
The name has changed, but it's the same concept.
Same, same concept, so the, we don't have the money to, it's like a, what we throw around, forty, fifty million dollar project that filing Morpse is interested in, so the feasibility study, to get a grant to pay for that would be, that's the only way to, that we would even consider it, so. But we have awesome, I have plethora of maps and whatever from our previous meetings, so I will light my binder to give that to you, not a problem.
And I just wanna say, we did not exclude you purposefully, so I do apologize that we did not get you the information before tonight's meeting, and happy to share that with you, it is on the Port Authority's website, and happy to get you up to speed, especially given your background.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And this is just to apply for the grant. We have applied for funds to the Ohio, uh, capital budget for this project, and if neither of those come, neither, you know, that one or this one come, uh, are awarded, we'll be looking for other, um, other funding opportunities, so, yeah. And we're asking for one reading only because it's due this week, so I don't have another opportunity to come before you.
Any other questions on this one? So, I'm gonna ask for suspension and, or no, you're gonna ask for suspension, right? Mr. Knuths, is your second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on, thirty-nine twenty-four, a resolution to authorize the issuance of then announced certificates for payment of 2023 bills for the Community Development Fund. Coming through economic development, Ms. Hoopt.
So, this is just, um, two invoices that Community Development, um, either, they had purchase orders from the previous year that were either closed, or they weren't open to begin with, and they need to be paid to Community Action.
Okay. You are asking for suspension? Do you wanna add anything?
Oh, yeah.
Nope, just if you had any questions on here.
Any questions on that, guys? Nope. No? Okay. Uh, suspension, and then Mr. Williams, your second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, ordinance is temporary ordinance eleven twenty-four. An ordinance to amend the city of Lancaster zoning map to change the zoning of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty five point one eight square feet identified as Fairfield County Auditor Tax Parcel Number five three six one eight nine three hundred and zero five three six one eight nine four hundred, from service industrial to commercial neighborhood, coming through code enforcement zoning, Mr. Aylers.
Yeah, so this was, uh, this is requested from a company on Cedar Hill Road, they are looking to bring it back to what it used to be for an office space, I don't know, Mr. Everett, if you have anything you might wanna add to it?
Yeah, I'm certainly available for questions, um, briefly, this is, two parcels of Cedar Hill Road, there is a, uh, office building built in nineteen sixty-five there, that has been used as an office since it's been built, uh, with periodic vacancies, and, uh, in the, the grand rezoning process of Lancaster, it got switched from a use that allows office to one that does not allow office. Uh, the building is not suitable for an industrial type complex, it has, you know, drop ceilings like this, you can't fit equipment or other material handling effects in there, and so the request is to rezone these two back into, uh, commercial neighborhood which would allow office use.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? So, I have three readings.
And then we'll need to set a public hearing for this, so I would imagine we could set it for the third reading, if that all possible.
All right, so we'll get that scheduled.
Yeah, we have to look and make sure we make our notice requirements.
Okay.
We'll look at that.
Any other questions on that one? Okay. Uh, departmental updates.
Good evening, I'll be brief, um, Nick Snyder, Lancaster Police Department. I just wanted to, uh, kind of memorialize, five days ago, February twenty-first, uh, we lost Brett Markwood, uh, he was shot in the face and killed responding to a robbery, and that's a very important date for our, uh, agency, very important date for the family, still dealing with that, and we, we utilize that as a reminder of, uh, what to do moving forward. So, uh, just brief, briefly, I know I've talked about our annual report a few times, um, in the last few meetings, nine hundred and fifty-eight domestic violence calls we went on last year, which is the number one culprit for officers being involved in a, in a death or serious injury, hundred and thirty-nine times we encountered somebody with a firearm, I believe right around twenty-seven times we, uh, encountered, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-nine times we encountered somebody where a physical assault took place with us, um, twenty-seven times we encountered somebody with a firearm, and eighteen times we encountered somebody with a knife. I say all that to say this, that, uh, the support of council and the community is not overlooked, we are very, very, very supported, uh, everything that I've talked about before with the shields, uh, in the vehicles, all the way to the armor that we wear, um, you know, the, the support of our special response team, I think four of their SWAT callouts last year involved somebody with a gun, um, so, we're very, very, very lucky to keep the people that we have, and I appreciate the support of council for that, so that's really all I wanted to say tonight. Thank you.
Linda?
I'd like to give a departmental update, so the Community Development Department up until now has been under the mayor's office, and no one really know why. By law, the Income Tax Department has been, uh, reports to the mayor, and all other departments, all service departments and safety departments report to the Service Safety Director. So, we've gone, we've undergone a restructuring, and Community Development is now with the rest of the departments, which really makes a lot of sense, so we now, uh, report to the Service Safety Director, and I just wanted to give that as a departmental update.
Thank you very much, any questions? Thank you. Anyone else? No? So, night's meeting prep, you have anything for us?
Uh, yeah, I think Mr. Vail's here, he has, um, some information on temporary ordinance eleven twenty-four.
Good evening. I was asked to come and give you some background on this ordinance and some of the history behind it. This concerns eighteen fifty-six Cedar Hill Road and the rezoning. This was formerly zoned industrial light and now service industrial. Stakeholders Committee, back when we were rewriting the zoning code, had long conversations about some of these uses, one of those was the recovery center that used to be in there, and many people did not feel that this use should go back in to a service industrial area. The recovery center had been there for many years until they moved out in twenty twelve. Since then, it's been eleven years since we've had that type of use there. We had a zoning clearance come in for a rise-up recovery, we wanted to go in with a recovery type operation, and after consulting the law director, we both agreed that we felt that they should go for a use variance, and go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, that case did, and as always, neighbors are informed that a use variance has been applied for. So, at the meeting, um, there were two neighbors that came forward who spoke adamantly against having this use in place. One was a neighbor across the street who was not comfortable in having a recovery center directly across the street from her, and then another gentleman who is a recovering addict, just two or three properties down from this property, spoke adamantly about not wanting this type of use there. The board voted five to nothing against it, and did not approve the use variance. Thus, it went through Planning Commission, so my. The property itself is made up of twelve parcels, not just one, but twelve. We have a light manufacturing use in the rear, we have storage taking place in the main building up front, and we have an office building that's been attached to that main building in the front. So, what they wanna do is, they want to rezone two parcels that include this one office building, so office use can be used there. This would be commercial neighborhood, which allows for office uses including medical type uses, so a recovery type unit could go back into that space. There are staff members that are not for this change in zoning district to, uh, commercial neighborhood, because it's been light industrial, it is, we are encouraging industrial type uses in that area, yes, it's been an office, but there are other uses that can go in there that can be associated to a light industrial or a service industrial that has offices. BZA didn't, voted to deny due to the audience testimony, that was another thing that people did not feel comfortable supporting this. And then to have two parcels out of twelve to be, be rezoned specifically for commercial neighborhood was considered spot zoning on our part, and that we're adding yet another district, although there's central or commercial neighborhood down the street, we have lots of other districts around, and now we're adding another one smack dab in the middle of this property. So, as you consider, we wanted to make sure that you had other background concerning this rezoning. Any questions?
Hearing done.
Thank you. That's all, tonight's meeting prep.
Okay. Anybody else have any other items for finance? If not, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And we are adjourned at six twenty.
Uh, the regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin promptly at six thirty.
Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Taylor with Habitat for Humanity of Southeast Ohio. Here at Habitat for Humanity, our mission is simple. We bring the community together to build strength, stability, and self-reliance through shelter. Achieving this mission is made possible with the support of generous local partners like the Buckeye Cares Program. That means Buckeye will make a donation with every vehicle sold this month. From all of us at Habitat for Humanity, we say thank you, Buckeye, for once again offering your generous support.
If you would rise and join me in a moment of prayer. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things that we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. I call this Lancaster City Council meeting for February 26th to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers, here. Mr. Ailes.
Here.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Here.
Mrs. Hoop.
Here.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Here.
Mr. Schoonover.
Here.
Ms. Teener.
Here.
Mr. Wing.
Here.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Let the record reflect that nine members at Lancaster City Council are here. Do we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Wolfinger?
Mr. President, I'll make that motion to excuse Mr. Wolfinger.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Wolfinger. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed? Reading and disposing of the journal.
Regular council minutes dated February 12, 2024.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Reports of city officials.
Series of emails regarding the Safety Committee minutes submitted by Mr. Bizcheck. Email dated February 13, 2024 regarding electronic devices for councilmembers submitted by President Porter. Series of emails regarding the Fairfield County Workforce Center submitted by Lancaster Port Authority Executive Director Stephanie Bosco. Email dated February 14, 2024 regarding Finance Committee minutes submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Email dated February 16, 2024 regarding an op-ed written by Ohio Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Steve Stiver submitted by President Porter. Email dated February 20, 2024 regarding Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee minutes submitted by Mr. Aylers. Series of emails regarding storm and sanitary sewer construction projects, street impacts submitted by Mayor McDaniel. Email dated February 22, 2024 regarding mayoral boards and commissions appointments submitted by Mayor McDaniel. Email dated February 22, 2024 regarding illegal opinion on the city's Edie Road property sale submitted by Law Director Hall.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Move on to communications.
Return letter for public hearing dated February 14, 2024 regarding temporary ordinance 8-24. Notice to Legislative Authority of the Transfer of a Liquor License from James Fresh Market, Inc., DBA Lancaster Save-A-Lot, located at 629 North Memorial Drive, Lancaster, Ohio 43130, to SAL Acquisition 1 LLC, doing business as Lancaster Save-A-Lot, located at 629 North Memorial Drive, Lancaster, Ohio, dated February 12, 2024, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, 6606 Tussing Road, Reynoldsburg, Ohio 43068. Email dated February 20, 2024 regarding property owner signatures submitted by Mr. Dan Signer.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same time. Special awards and, well, special presentation and awards.
There are none.
Petitions and memorials.
There are none.
At this time, we move to the permission of voters and taxpayers to address council. Are there any individuals here who would like to address council? Looks like we have one. Sir, if you could come forward and place your name on the, um, and address on the board, and you have five minutes to address city council.
Mr. President, members of council, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak briefly tonight. There's an issue on your agenda tonight that County Commissioner's Office is interested in. It's the rezoning of the parcel on Cedar Hill Road, and I just wanted to make sure you understood why we would be interested in that issue. We have a current contingent contract to acquire a building called the Cullinade out on Sheridan Drive, and there are some contingencies and some escrows associated with that transaction. And more importantly, there's the Commissioner's Office word in the context of that transaction that we would do no harm. We're not acquiring that building for the purpose of becoming a landlord. We're acquiring that building for purposes of avoiding being a tenant. We currently pay a fair amount of rent in that structure right now for the Health Department. And there are other uses intended for that transaction when it closes. But in terms of our word, what we've said to the current owners and through them to the current tenants is that we will do no harm. If there are tenants in that building now who have important needs in their operations that require them to continue being there, we will facilitate those needs. So in other words, what we were trying to do is not have all the tenants go running as soon as they heard about the contingent transaction. Now, there's some escrow money involved where we've agreed to cover that problem should there be a run on the bank, so to speak. But what would be helpful to the county, to the transaction, and frankly, I think to the historical use of the building, is to approve that rezoning. But I just wanted the city council to be aware of the county's interest in that transaction. And I don't know if it's appropriate under your current rules, Mr. President, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Typically, at this time, we do not, but if this, we happily entertain if anybody does.
Well, on behalf of the Commissioner's Office, we would very much appreciate your support on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals here who wish to speak as part of voters and taxpayers? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to reports of standing committees.
Safety Committee meeting minutes and correction dated February 2, 2024 submitted by Mr. Bizcheck. Public Works Committee meeting minutes dated February 9, 2024 submitted by Ms. Teener. Finance Committee meeting minutes dated February 12, 2024 submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee meeting minutes dated February 12, 2024 submitted by Mr. Aylers.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll move on to the reports of special committees.
There are none.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we will move on to the reading of resolutions. Temporary Resolution 1524.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of chemicals for use by the Division of Water coming out of Water Water Pollution Control sponsored by Mr. Wing, seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 1524.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Temporary Resolution 1524. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 1524 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 1624.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of pipe and fittings for use by the Division of Water coming out of Water Water Pollution Control sponsored by Mr. Wing and seconded by Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 1624.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Temporary Resolution 1624. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this one, just like the last one, is another annual purchase of piece of legislation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 1624 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 1724.
A resolution to amend the Utilities Collection Fund 7006 expense budget and amend the certificate of appropriation with the county auditor coming out of Finance sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Aylers.
Councilmember Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Temporary Resolution 1724.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution, pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Temporary Resolution 1724. Councilmember Schoonover?
I don't have anything.
Any further discussion on Temporary Resolution 1724? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 1724 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 1824.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids to construct the concentrate discharge improvements project coming out of Water Water Pollution Control sponsored by Mr. Wing and seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 1824.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Temporary Resolution 1824. Councilmember Wing.
Nothing further to add.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 1824 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 24-24.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriated from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and the fire insurance escrow fund 8023 coming out of Finance sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Temporary Resolution 2424.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Temporary Resolution 2424. Councilmember Schoonover.
I don't have anything.
Any further discussion on Temporary Resolution 2424? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 2424 passes nine to zero. We will now move on to the second reading of temporary resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 2524.
A resolution to amend the Three Mile Street Improvement Fund 2009 expense budget and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor coming out of Finance sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Schoonover.
A second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 2524. Temporary Resolution 2624.
A resolution approving the renewal application for replacement of farmland in an agricultural district pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 929.02 and to declare an emergency coming out of law sponsored by Mr. Nyheiser and seconded by Mr. Bizcheck.
Councilmember Nyheiser, second of three readings. Okay. Is it suspended?
Yeah, the deadline is March 4th for the applicant to get his applicant, application in, and so we have to approve that before he can submit his application to the Department of Agriculture, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 2624.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 2624. Any discussion?
This is, this is regarding property out on the east side of town with giving the owner an opportunity to gain some tax advantages and other advantages by moving this into a, their farmland into agricultural district.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 2624 passes nine to zero. Councilmember Nyheiser.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 2624.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record. Resolution temporarily numbered 2624. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 2624 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 2824.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to accept an H2 Ohio equipment grant and to execute contracts as required coming out of Water Water Pollution Control sponsored by Mr. Wing and seconded by Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 2824.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 2824. Councilmember Wing, any discussion?
We discussed this mostly last meeting. We just have an impending deadline. Is that what you do, suspend?
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 2824 passes nine to zero. Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Suspension. Suspension.
Is it suspended?
Yeah, the deadline is March 4th for the applicant to get his applicant, application in, and so we have to approve that before he can submit his application to the Department of Agriculture, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary Resolution 2624.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary Resolution 2624. Any discussion?
This is, this is regarding property out on the east side of town with giving the owner an opportunity to gain some tax advantages and other advantages by moving this into a, their farmland into agricultural district.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend and waive the third reading of temporary Resolution 2824 passes nine to zero. Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 2824.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 3024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 2624. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 3224.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 3224. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 3224.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 3224. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 3224 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 2824.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to accept an H2 Ohio equipment grant and to execute contracts as required. Coming out of Water Water Pollution Control sponsored by Mr. Wing and seconded by Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 2824.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend rules and waive the third reading of temporary Resolution 2824. Councilmember Wing, any discussion?
We discussed this mostly last meeting. We just have an impending deadline, so we need to suspend.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to pass temporary Resolution 2824 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 2924.
A resolution to amend the certificate with the county auditor, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the wastewater fund 6004 and in the wastewater utility reserve fund 6029. Coming out of Water Water Pollution Control sponsored by Mr. Wing, seconded by Mr. Ayls.
Councilmember Wing.
A second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary Resolution 2924. Temporary Resolution 3024.
A resolution to increase receipts, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and the water utility reserve fund 6027. Coming out of Water Water Pollution Control sponsored by Mr. Wing and seconded by Mr. Ayls.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 3224.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend rules and waive the third reading of temporary Resolution 3224. Councilmember Wing, any discussion?
No.
Anybody else have any discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary Resolution 3824 passes nine to zero. Councilmember Hoop.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution, temporary Resolution 3824. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to pass temporary Resolution 3824 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 3924.
A resolution to authorize the issuance of a then-announced certificates for payment of 2023 bills for the Community Development Fund 2026. Coming out of Economic Development sponsored by Mrs. Hoop and seconded by Mr. Wing.
Councilmember Hoop.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 3924.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 3924. Councilmember Hoop? No discussion?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary Resolution 3924. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, temporary Resolution 3924 passes nine to zero. Are there any further resolutions come before council this evening? If not, we will move on to the reading of ordinances with temporary ordinance 824.
An ordinance to amend the City of Lancaster zoning map to change the zoning of 0.99 plus or minus acres identified as Fairfield County Auditor Tax Parcel Number 0535-067300, 0535-067500, and 0535-067510 from Central Business District to Service Industrial. Coming out of Code Enforcement and Zoning sponsored by Mr. Aylers, seconded by Mr. Luchtenberg. There will be a public hearing on March 11th for this.
Councilmember Aylers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council place on the table temporary ordinance 824.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to put on the table temporary Resolution 824, reminding all council members that this is a non-debatable motion. We would just move to calling the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Motion to table passes nine to zero. Moving on to the reading of temporary ordinance 1024.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to deed approximately 21.746 plus or minus acres owned by the City of Lancaster and further identified as Fairfield County, Ohio Parcel Number 0531800450 for $1 to the Lancaster Port Authority and to execute any and all documents necessary for the transfer thereof and to declare an emergency. Coming out of Economic Development sponsored by Mrs. Hoop, seconded by Mr. Schoonover.
Councilmember Hoop.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to replace resolution, or temporary ordinance 1024 by replacing it with temporary ordinance 1024 star.
Second.
As given to the clerk earlier today.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to replace temporary ordinance 1024 with temporary ordinance 1024 star. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ayls.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.